All right, the time is now 6:01. I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Tracy has taken roll call and we'll go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
All right, so now we'll move on to item three to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee of Garris. Any public comments? All those in favor for approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? And now we'll move on to item four to approve the regular board meeting minutes of September 10th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair of Garris. Any public comments? All those in favor for approving the minutes of September 10th, 2024, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? And now we're up for a public comment. So the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as the body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right and privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. You are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair, acting chair, may interrupt or terminate if statements are out of order. Any public comments? No public comment. We'll move on to item six, which is announcements from superintendent Mica Hill. Over to you.
Thank you. Just a few announcements, and I think most of you know this, but Tyler Christensen, our communications specialist, has taken a position somewhere else. And so we're in the midst of trying to fill that position. So as we try and navigate board meetings and until that position is filled, there's just gonna be a little extra excitement, but we wish Tyler all the best. Our safe storage campaign kicked off this week, and so we're excited to continue to do that work, providing cable locks and trigger locks for families. They can come in and get up to two trigger locks and as many cable locks as they want. We have enough to go around. So they're available at our three comprehensive high schools. We'll also have some available at Sealy and Willard here in the near future. And so we're just excited to continue to do that. And as always, if there's ever a crisis, we really encourage people to contact the crisis text line at 988. And then a bit of good news, and hopefully you saw this in the paper, but Russell Elementary School, one of Lena's favorites, achieved a blue ribbon status from the Department of Education. So that's a national recognition. There are only two schools in the state that received that recognition this year. And so to Principal Howard and his staff, what an amazing accomplishment and great job for them and quite a pat on the back for the hard work that they're doing. So congratulations to them.
Okay, now we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. There will be no board discussion as these are routine items. We'll have two motions in elementary and a high school. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda? Moved by vice chair of Garris, second by trustee Witt. There is no board discussion. Any public comment? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the elementary consent agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present? Is there a motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Wolick, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. There is no board discussion. Any public comments? All those in favor for approving the high school consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Hand? Unanimous to all trustees present? Next up is item eight is new business and up first is the lease of space at Russell Elementary. Go Bears by the Missoula Food Bank, and this is over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this is similar to the lease that the Missoula Food Bank has at Lowell. They lease a portion of space that the school makes available for a market, a Missoula Food Bank market. And the food bank's identified the Lowell area as a school that could serve the population in that area similarly. And so we're recommending a lease to the food bank, similar to the lease we do with the food bank for the Lowell school. It's real basic. What we ask is that the food bank provide evidence of insurance and provide some of the similar expectations of a lease in terms of following our policies, following rules and laws and that type of thing. They've operated without issue in Lowell and would, I would expect they'd do the same here. The nominal fee would be the same as in Lowell, which is a dollar a year. So we're recommending board support for this lease.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is the elementary motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by vice chair F. Garris, second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present? Next up is the lease of space at Missoula County Public Schools Administration Building by Spark Arts Ignite Learning. And back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this is really just a bit of a cleanup. Spark was, had been leasing that same space under MEF, and MEF moved to the admin building B. So Spark is in that space along with one of our staff persons. So this would be, instead of Spark subleasing under MEF, they would have their own lease of that space. So it's very much just a bit of a cleanup with MEF moving to building B.
This is a full board motion. Is there any questions by trustee? CNN, is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by vice chair of Garris, second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Next up is to approve the contract with Beach Transportation, and this is back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thanks. So this isn't deja vu. It may seem like that. But in March, the board talked pretty extensively about the contractual terms with Beach. You're still obligated by state law to approve the contract in a public meeting. So that's why we're here. The terms of the agreement really were limited to what was at play in the original contract, which goes back a number of years. It's pretty much a pretty basic contract, with the exception of some changes to section two. And so the changes here involve a course of action for the school district to take some transportation services in-house. This was part of a conversation that the board had in March. We also talked with Beach during negotiations about some form of exit strategy or plan over a period of time to move some services to the district. We're taking over routing. And it was really why we really valued a five-year agreement, so that we could look at these later years of the contract as an opportunity to provide in-house transportation. So the time spent since we met last has really been focused on this section two, and so I'll jump right into it. Section two is a pretty long section about services. And we've highlighted, Tracy has, thank you Tracy, the new provisions, so you can follow along. What this first highlight provides is for, beginning in July of 2025, which will be the third year of this five-year contract, we could initiate transportation services with two buses. And the buses are described above. They're type A through type D. And the significance of those buses, they're really the type of buses that Beach can offer services right now. They're also the type that fit within the bus standards put out by OPI or the bus guidelines. Type A buses are the shorter special ed buses. Type D are the stub-nosed, longer buses. And the type B and C are sort of the types you see around town with Beach, the 72-passenger buses. So we could put in service those two buses for to and from school transportation services, special ed or regular ed services. You'll see there's an exclusion for noon kindergarten, noon special needs services. That's a, it's in quotes because it's language from schedule one that's been there quite a while. So we really don't have noon kindergarten routes. There's still half-day kindergarten, which is allowed, but I think we would transport those kids to school. And if they want to get picked up, then their parents probably provide that service. The noon special needs routes are really the Jefferson preschool routes. So that's what those refer to. Then in addition to those type A through D buses, we could offer services, to and from services, in an unlimited number of type E buses defined in 2010-101. So this is a new piece of state law which allows districts to own buses. They're still described as a bus, but they're buses that are of 10 passengers or less and are class five rated. And so we currently own one of these types of buses. It's a Toyota C and a van, eight-passenger bus. We bought with pre-employment transition service funds at Big Sky. So those funds are those that van is used there.
Yeah.
I don't feel like two buses is enough.
Mike?
I don't feel like two buses is enough, and I want to know why that number was agreed upon. And also, can you tell me the benefits of a five-year contract when I'm, I just want to know why we chose five more years to be with them? Is that part of the exit strategy? Are they open to the exit strategy? I just, it just seems, over my miniscule type time on school board, our contract with Beach has been so incredibly all over the place. And I just, I want to know the why behind because it makes me uncomfortable because I feel like we're in a, they're the only game in town. And so at what point, you know, are we going to exit from this? In five years, are we going to readdress this? Or why can we only have two of our own buses as part of this contract?
We don't provide any buses now. We don't have any buses now. We don't offer any bus services now. We have no real infrastructure now. We don't have any bus drivers now. So what I'd say is that part of, it's not where we started either, trustee Witcher. I mean, we weren't there to begin with. We started with a provision that was pretty general and pretty broad. And so the objection to more buses was based upon really the fact that Beach argued their 85% fixed costs and any routes that we assume reduces their revenue and their ability to break even or ability to operate. So what I think in terms of more buses or more services, that's where we want to head. But the fact of the matter is we still would have to buy two buses this year, put those buses to work, which still require obligations by us to get them to work in terms of coming up with funds to purchase them. And then year after year, we build them into a bus depreciation fund that we can levy up to 20% of the value of those buses to replace them. So yeah, it's not a ton of buses, but it's a start. And then we still have type E buses that can be filtered in to serve other types of services for students.
So we started this contract with them and it looked different than where we ended up. What we wanted is different than this right here.
No, it's not correct. So what we talked to them about, what we talked to you guys about in March wasn't a representation of any buses or bus services. What the board talked about at that meeting was, gee, wouldn't it be nice to have some in-house services? And so we went back to Beach and said, yeah, you know, we talked about this during negotiations that there's, has to be some type of transition planning that happens. So what became a conversation with this board in March was built into the proposed language in the contract. And that proposed language in April, as I said, was very broad, very general. It said basically, you'll provide services that we don't provide. And then that negotiated to what you see here in terms of what's a narrow description of the types of services we can provide. And from Beach's standpoint, from their perspective, they felt like they're relying upon a certain level of revenue and that that was too broad for them to reduce revenue based upon our broad ability to pull routes off the table and pull services off the table from them. And so this is where we landed. Should I continue?
Trustee Walsh?
Is it possible to have a shorter contract with them? Like let's say we do a one-year contract with them and then next year, look at where we are at with running our own routes and then negotiate a different deal where maybe we're running more of our own routes?
Right. I think, yes, it is. So when we met in March, it was probably the culmination of 14 months of negotiation to get to the five-year contract with the rates that are specified in the contract. And so we got to that point. We came to the board in March primarily because they had provided services that whole year without rates being approved. So we needed to pay retro pay for that year of service. Short answer is we can contract for up to five years per statute. But this is where, what we presented to the board in March was a five-year agreement.
Vice chair of Garris?
So as a part of all of these meetings, and be a little frank about a few things of why we chose five years, why we settled on two, why we did a few of the things that we did. Five-year was our choice. They would have been happier, fine, with probably a shorter time. The five-year gave us the opportunity to get lower rates spread over a period of time, heavier in the front, lower in the back end, saves our taxpayers quite a bit of money in the long run. It also gives us time to get a few buses. And the thing about bussing is, we don't, outside of MICA, we don't have experience in the school district running a bus service. So we have to see, we have to learn. So you tip your toe in the water to learn. And that means not just running routes, but that means how do we service these things? Is there a facility that we build one day to where we can service these things? Do we look at electric buses? What are the different options that we have? And that's going to take time because we don't have anybody in the school district dedicated to just doing bussing. So we wanted five years for that part. The other part, if you look at the years of this, is we're already a year into this contract because we've been negotiating for 16 months. Well, I mean, I've been on that committee for three years. We've really been negotiating for three years. But so it really gives us time to learn, to internalize, to have discussions as a board, for the administration to try some stuff out, to give us that opportunity to know that if in three years or four years, maybe this grows into something. Maybe we take on a bigger chunk. Maybe we don't. Maybe we hate it. And maybe we just decide we want to contract out or continue to. But we need that time just because we just don't have the horsepower as an administration or as a school district to just to jump into this. And it would be a bad decision to do that anyways because we just don't know. We don't know what is right and what is wrong. But that's really why it got here. We, how many iterations of this did we go through? I mean, we literally went back and forth and it's been a long, arduous process. Even this process for this language part took us three months, something like that, two, three months. That's after we agreed on the rates. So it's a weird time, and it's never been a big issue in the past because rates have gone up small amounts. But the last four years, we've doubled how much we pay for transportation. And that makes a big problem for our taxpayers. So we have to find ways to slow that down because it's not stopping. So that's part of starting to learn what we're doing, so.
Trustee Witcher?
So you mentioned that we have doubled what our rates are that we're paying out to Beach in the last year, in the last two years, last four years. And so in this contract, well, we're year one into the contract, it's gone up how much? Do you remember?
9.5.
And they're claiming, and Beach is saying that's because of cost of doing business. And at no point can we verify that this is the cost of doing business. I just am afraid that our taxpayer dollars are going to essentially a business that is the only game in town and where our hands are tied behind our backs. And transportation, and I've seen the costs go up and it scares me. And like, this is a huge, huge part of our budget. So at which point, like, what's the breaking ground? You're saying, okay, we're going to enter this for five years. We're going to stay here for five years. And like, when we look across the state, like, what's Bozeman paying in comparison for their rates?
Yeah, so that was a big conversation during the first 14 months of the negotiations was Marketplace. And I don't think that we've come to a meeting of the minds regarding Marketplace because Beach still feels like that they're way below Marketplace. And part of the rationale for that is really based upon regional and state bids. So you have, as a group of trustees, you can adopt or agree to a contract to renew with a contractor like we are tonight, or you can bid. And when other trustees have, first of all, this is the only local contractor in the state that I'm aware of. Everyone else is served in the double A ranks either individually or by a national, or rather, international company. So you don't know what you're going to get with a bid. And so a lot of it has to do with us looking at what other bids have been like. And they've been 25 to 40%. And that's what people have come out, or districts have come out and they've experienced is that level of increase. So that's where Beach is coming from, is that if this is bid, this is what you're talking about and you're going to see way higher rates than here. And the here is negotiating a contract, the statute only allows them to go up by 12%. Well, that's where they started and we're at, as trustee F. Garris mentioned, we've negotiated from two years of 12 to this five-year phase-in period. So we feel like we've improved our position in that respect. And the other thing we've done is we've done quite a bit of due diligence in trying to compare the costs between Bozeman and Billings and us. And it sounds easier than it is. If you jump to schedule one in this agreement, you'll see there's about at least six line items that are all factoring into the cost of transportation. And so when we have, when we compare to Billings or we compare to Bozeman, and Bozeman, it's tough too because they do a flat monthly rate, but Billings, we could compare and we're just less than them after this contract. And so we're in that top three point, we're in the top three is what I'd say. I think Beach would say we're in the bottom of the double As. But we feel good about the work that Terry Phalen did in terms of pulling actual invoices from two different points during the year. And, you know, one of the big differences is we have routes that are three-hour minimums. Excess are paid in half-hour increments. Billings is four and a half hour minimums. And then the excess is paid at a lower hourly rate. So you compare that. We have attendance that are a line item. They do not. There's different gas caps. So you factor all these sort of variables, try and make it as apples on apples as you can. And so we are in there. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, but I'd say we're in the top three. And that would be us, Billings, and Bozeman, but I'd put Helena right up there as well. So, you know, that is sort of the main change, what I just talked about. And there's some additional language in that second or first full sentence there about the right to provide shuttle and special education summer school routes. That's Beach preserving that sole right to those services, which we wouldn't have the bussing to provide at any rate at the moment. The notification is that next highlighted area that we would provide notice of routes that we would provide or put into service with our buses. This will again pull the routing person that we just hired. Their efforts will be an important part of identifying the most economical, the most bang-for-the-buck routes that we could take on and take over. And we'll need to provide notice of that. This discipline provision is really just some language that was talked about and we add it here, really incorporating what happens at the moment. The language here is a corollary. This is the bottom of the page up on the screen. This is for athletics, athletic extracurricular, after-school trips. The language that existed before was quite a bit more restrictive. It provided that Beach would provide all of this transportation service. And so here, there is less wiggle room from the original language of the agreement, but we provided for a phase-in of those two buses, one year and one bus in FY '25 or '26. And yeah, and I, let's see. Yeah, I see that one of the sentences isn't highlighted, which it should be. So beginning in July 1st, 2025, we'll put into service one of the two buses. Then July 1st, 2026, we'll put in the other bus for those after-school type services. In addition, we'd have available the use of an unlimited number of type E buses or passenger vehicles. So these are, passenger vehicles is found also in statute 2010-129. And that allows school district-owned passenger vehicles, which are 15 or fewer passengers, vehicles to be driven for activity after-school type transportation, along with unlimited number of those type E buses. So again, this is a conversation that we'll continue to have with the board because these are the types of purchases we have to plan to make, we have to fund, and then we have to put them in use. And I think these are really great opportunities for us to put different types of vehicles in use. We have to be cognizant of complying with insurance and insuring these vehicles and just ensuring that, how we use them in the way that's the safest for our students. I would also point out that these two buses that would be put into place, not the type E or the passenger vehicles, but those two would be, would serve within our, Missoula County, within our district boundaries. Jumping down the sheet, this is what we talked about last time in March. This is the commitment for at least a 3% increase to their staff. You know, they're a private provider, so we can't really control that. But we also recognize the difficulty in getting bus drivers and would like to think that that would be a motivation of theirs as well. That next item is, it talks about prevailing wage, so we made some modification to that provision. We just incorporated some language. The next provision was the behavioral coaching intervention training. We provide two of those training services. And then Beach will provide their additional training at their discretion. Again, that used to be called man training. It's a little more broadly defined here. Under equipment, we purchase stop arms as required by statute. This provides for those, for Beach to reimburse us for those unamortized costs of those stop arms. So we paid a little over 60. We'd get 44,000 back. The bottom two highlighted paragraphs relate to seat belts. This is incorporating some addendum language that we already had in our contract. So, that's all we're doing is incorporating it into the agreement. Typically, we have, we handle these extensions through addendums. And so, what you're seeing here is going back to an actual agreement. Again, we didn't, we started out negotiations with the plan to start with a new, shiny new agreement, but we set aside that idea just based upon where negotiations were going. But still, we went back to the old contract and we've updated, enhanced it in these ways. Insurance, that highlighted paragraph, this relates to a huge cost increase. And one of the items that Beach negotiated was that we would get together and meet and negotiate in the event of premium increases that are tied to market conditions, not tied to accidents or other factors. There's no commitment there, but an opportunity to negotiate. And then, fuel, that's incorporating under paragraph 13, some language that, or incorporating language that already exists in terms of how practice works. That's that second sentence. Then, what was negotiated was a freeze in the fuel cap for the second year of the contract term. And that's actually on the Schedule One, so it's not even there. The other significant change was paragraph 16, assignment. So, this is, really from a school district standpoint, from our standpoint, one of the bigger risks to us is that Beach assigns or sells the contract and steps away from services. What we have now is a known quantity in terms of Beach, they've provided service for 80-plus years. So, we beefed up this assignment provision and it gives us an opportunity to perform some due diligence. One, I mean, credit to Beach that we've been able to operate as well as we have for this many years with this contract. I mean, it's not horrible, but it's nothing like the contracts that you'll see with the larger providers, the national providers. So, this was an area of focus for us is to boost this provision. They made some language changes that we didn't really like, but they are, it's part of negotiations. So, that's incorporated in that paragraph. And that's it. Schedule One is really incorporating what was part of our March 26 conversation. It's the rates. And it's how the rates are adjusted, you'll see that at the top. As trustee Afgharish mentioned, we're already through the first year and we're starting the second year. And then, the last three years of this agreement, we'll be test-driving, operating our own busing services for students per the contract. So, that's the agreement.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Walsh?
So, with that assignments rate section, so if they, let's say they want to get out of the game, they want to be done before the five years is up, then we have no contract with anyone, or that our contract goes to the next company, like a different company?
Yeah, it's kind of strange because it's, there'd be a lot of moving parts. It'd be tough to visualize how that would happen. But you can essentially assign the services to a new entity, but our position is, is that only certain firms are uniquely qualified to perform this level of service. And we reserved due diligence opportunity to ensure that the service could be performed at the same levels that we're expecting. And that's the primary change to that provision, is that preservation of due diligence.
If we were, let's say that happened year four and we were in a position to take over some of it, would we be able to then kind of change our contract at that point?
Yeah, it's a good question because what, really, at any point in the last two years for sure, but practically in the last three years, you're not going to have a company that's going to make a level of investment to provide service to MCPS, a capital investment, without having some interest in staying power. It's not a three-year gig or a two-year gig. And so, they'll want to know what we're doing. And I think in that situation, and I'm just predicting, is that they would want to be talking to us and ensuring that we would be able to develop a relationship. I think that what your option is, is a trustee at that point, is to bid the service. And then, you know, that's where it gets murky. So, it's kind of tough to visualize how that would look exactly, but it still exists as a contractual right that exists. So, you try and draft it the best way possible to preserve some level of due diligence and preservation of rights. But, you know, the two-year period of the last two years of this contract, you know, that's a significant capital investment that could go away following a bid.
Okay, so let's say, let's say we want wiggle room with how many buses, or we want to get a bigger, a better deal. Could we send it back to them tonight and say, the trustees aren't going to sign this, we want even a better deal? Would that give us some leverage to say, it's not a done deal, come back with some better numbers? Or is everyone so burned out on working on this, we need to just wrap it up?
You know, I, they have an attorney involved who we've been negotiating with for the last, I don't know, eight months. And a good local attorney and personally, I don't feel like there's any more room to make. You guys have that ability to say that this isn't going to work for us. And that's, this is your authority. And I don't know where it would go from there. I think that they've been pretty strong in their position. And I think that they, they look at this as something that was a surprise to them and they look at this as it's, it affects their planning and their ability to meet their obligations. And I think they feel like they've given where they are going to give. We've heard at least a couple times during negotiations that this is it. So, it doesn't mean that, you know, I mean, that, I mean, we would do whatever the board tells us to do, obviously. No, my recommendation, and I think it's our team recommendation, is in the packet. And the only thing that's changed from the time we met in March, where we talked pretty positively about the service that we get from Beach, and we've talked pretty positively about the years of service and the record of not missing routes. I mean, you, there isn't a double A district that contracts for service that didn't have to adjust because they weren't getting all their routes met. And so, we can't say that, I mean, they provide a good service. They provided a longstanding a service. Trustee Afgharish pointed out last time that this is, this is a local company. I think it's the last local company certainly in the double As. And so, you do have a community organization. Yes, they represent what I think trustee Witcher described as a monopoly. They are the game in town, and that's true. They also are, are community members. The staff that works there, the people that own it are living and working in this community, are taxpayers in this community. So, I think it falls into, and this is where it's, it's a bit of a, you don't know. It's like careful what you ask for type of thing because this could be bid and we, it could look a lot worse, both in terms of service and cost. And all we can try and do to give you the best info and advice possible is to look at what other districts are doing. To be frank, they're all with the same national company. This isn't like there's five of them that are thrown in bids. This isn't like that. This is, this is a town, game in town. But the other game in town is the national company that's the only other game in town.
Mr. McWilliams would like to speak?
I'm just going to kind of go backwards a little bit and kind of address some things that kind of already been addressed. But, you know, our support is with this language. We're not set up infrastructure-wise. I mean, we, as Pat mentioned, we came in a little higher with a few more buses and we came to realization with our committee that, you know, we really only have just over three and a half years remaining on the contract. And what are we going to do in the next, in the next school year? Now, you're down to two, or, you know, two and a half. And it's, we would have to move really, really fast. And as trustee Afgharish said, we don't have anybody in the district that focuses strictly on transportation yet. We have someone starting October 1 that'll be our routing coordinator that does have experience, a lot of, brings a lot of experience to the district that we're very happy with. But, we'll look at how we can really tap into these routes and provide our own services in the best-case scenario. And so, it's kind of baby steps and we're feeling pretty good about it. As, I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but it'll get us to the next step, I think, to get where we want to go.
Yeah, any questions or comments? Vice Chair Afgharish?
Just a couple things. So, for one clarity for the board, our transportation budget is separate from our general budget. So, everybody understands that, that whatever we spend in transportation does not affect teachers and people in the classroom. Doesn't mean we're not responsible for and have a high level of desire to keep costs as low as possible for our taxpayers, but this is not affecting in the classroom dollars. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, is that don't underestimate the power of us being able to do Class E buses. Some places that hopefully we can find some savings in the general budget is with activities, hopefully with those on some level. And that will affect in-classroom teachers there. So, it's a really good part of what Beach has been flexible enough to do here with this contract. My personal opinion is, you asked the question, if we can, we send this back? And I'll be a little bit more frank than Pat because Pat's, he's a smarter talker than I am. But, I think our two options are is to approve this, or we go to bid for a new contract and a new person, people next year. And that's a mess. So, that's really, I think, comes down to our options because they're, they're at that point. Like I said, we've had so many meetings, so many lawyers involved, everything. So, we feel like this gives us an opportunity to bring down costs. We have a person that's going to take over routing. We think that there's optimizations in routing to bring down costs outside of this, outside of rates, outside of buses, that we can look at our routes. We have, and I'm going to misspeak here burly, so correct me, but we have some of the, the most, if not the most, close to the most special ed routes in all of Montana. We have a ton. No, we do that. It's not Beach. We're the ones that do that. So, we do it with our IEPs, we do it with our, different things like that. We have, Beach told us, we had at the end of last year, I don't remember the number, it was like 12 routes, was it five? Five, yeah, that had five or less kids. We were going out, there was like 10 routes that we were going out to get one kid. So, and that's not on Beach, that's on us as a school district. So, having a routing person to optimize that kind of stuff is a savings for us. It could be a significant savings. So, those are places that I think dollar-wise that we can save. And Beach is on board with that. Beach was like, we even think it's ridiculous to send a bus out, we'll do it because you'll pay us. But we think it's ridiculous to send a bus out for one kid. So, and maybe there are instances that still needs to happen. But those are things that, as a school board and as an administration, that we can take on ourselves and be better at to save our taxpayers money. So, there's a lot of different ways here with the way we've set up this contract to save ourselves money, to be more efficient, and at the same time to learn to set ourselves up in a couple years that, you know, maybe instead of two buses, we're looking at, you know, 15 or 30 buses for the next contract. And then, whoever that the contractor is that are working with that, they'll know that. They'll know that when they go into bid and they'll say, okay, you're going to take on 30 routes. So, this is what a contract would look like. So, it just gives us time, gives us that opportunity. And at the same time, I'm confident we're going to save money with this contract.
Trustee Wallach, was your hand up?
It was, but he pretty much covered it. I was going to ask about the significance of the Type E buses and the unlimited nature of that and how they could help us, but one-off students and extracurriculars and all that. So, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Vice Chair Walker Andrews, then trustee Witcher?
I know everybody's tired of the negotiations, but is there anywhere in here I didn't notice to say we want to reopen, you know, in two years with something, you know, so that even if it's a five-year, that it could turn into a three-and-a-half-year with some modifications?
You know, there's not a general re opener, but there is. I think it's Section 12, there's some rate opportunities. Also in Section Two, if there's changes in, probably put my fingers on it. It's language that's been there that allows the parties to meet and negotiate for different reasons. The parties agree to notify each other when changes necessitate expansion, reduction, or changes in routes. So, we're not, nothing in the contract is now or has ever committed us to a specific number or specific routes. The board approves the routes, and as trustee Afgharish says, what, what, we have the opportunity to do, I think it's a bit of a puzzle because there's routes that serve so many different areas of town, and there's routes that pick up kids at all different points during the day, pretty much. So, it's going to take a bit of a Rubik's Cube type of look at it to put two buses into the most economical, into service the most economical way possible.
I, this, I really appreciate the work that has gone in negotiating this contract and the long, long-term relationship with Beach. I'm 100% and local company, all that jazz. Just so I'm clear, I completely understand that it's a different, it's a different budget and it's not taking teachers out of the classroom, but yet it is still taxpayer dollars. So, we permissively levy to make up whatever cost is for each of these contracts, correct?
That's correct.
So, part of me just gets concerned that we fall back on that and they fall back on that, like, oh, hey, well, they're just going to permissively levy it and approve it, it's going to be fine. And it's just like, I'm all for us having us in-house deciding that we are going to set our own routes and do all that, that it is moving in the right direction. But I just feel like if somebody doesn't say the other things publicly, then I'm not, I'm not just going to be like, okay, cool, this is great, knowing what I've learned over the last two years about this. That concerns me. Because to me, just saying, oh, we're just going to permissively levy it, it's not taking teachers out of the classroom, isn't, isn't okay. And also, the Class E buses, like a Sienna minivan is not going to actually transport the Hellgate football team anywhere. The Class E buses, I just don't, like, as someone who runs a fleet of Class E vehicles for my job, I know, like, what it, it's not, I don't really see us cost-saving that much with Class E vehicles when it comes to activities and that sort of stuff.
So, excellent point. One that I think we've all tugged at is the permissive levy portion of this. And that's why I would say that the easiest thing for us to do 16 months ago would have been to go in and say, we'll do a five-year contact, contract to do 12% per year because we can do that without going to bid. And Beach would have signed off of that and smiled and ran away. Instead, we did a five-year contract that increased 33% over five years, 35% over five years. So, it averages about 6.5% per year, so about half. And I'm just doing round numbers, we don't know exact numbers. But, that was the fight, it was exactly that, is don't take the easy route, do what's right for our taxpayers and get a rate that spread over time is, you know, is going to be more reasonable rate. So, and then for the Class E things, I agree, you know, the football team's not going to go anywhere. I mean, these bigger, you know, if you're a team over six or eight, it's not going to do much for you. But, you know, can, can we take the golf team to? But, you know, can, can we take the golf team to Calisbell? Probably, um, instead of hiring a bus. Can we take, you know, some smaller sports? Yeah, probably. So it's not gonna be significant hundreds of thousands of dollars, but could it be thousands of dollars? I hope so, you know? And, and then we can make a plan from there, so.
Mr. McWilliams?
The other thing I'll add to that, as the committee talked a lot about, how do we reduce these costs? How do we reduce transportation costs as an overall? Do we look at limiting some routes? Those are decisions that the board will have to make at some point in time. Do we look at, uh, combining activities from schools? If we have wrestling teams from all three schools, go, do we go that way? So there's, there's a lot of different ways we can look at reducing routes. I think one of the things with our routing coordinator coming in was, is that they'll be, she'll be able to dive in really, really deep and look at our routes and see how efficient they are. I believe Beach runs a very efficient program. We've had them tested numerous times with the numerous Bell studies we've had over the last eight or nine years. When we've contracted out the Transfinder, um, to do these studies and Bell time studies to see how our routes could work around these. They typically came back with, I know one year it came back with, we need like 24 more additional routes. Um, and then Beach re-looked at it and said, no, we can do it with one route. And so the efficiency's been tested on their part. I don't know that we'll find a bunch of efficiencies, but it'll allow us to look into it and see how we combine things. We can reduce things and bring things to the board to make those decisions of whether or not we wanna reduce some routes to reduce that, that permissive levy.
Any other questions? This is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair Evgaris. Seconded by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Are there any final trustee comments?
I have a comment. I just wanna thank those of you that, um, helped with the negotiation. I think the last time I came in, you guys just finished a three-hour meeting. So thank you for doing that. And I do, I am excited at seeing MCPS become in-house for our transportation. Ever since I've been on a board, I think that's something I've always hoped we would get to. And I love that we have a great relationship with Beach when it comes to transportation. But I think as a school district our size, we definitely need to move it in-house. And it does bring us to the question of, it's awesome, we're getting a routing person, but then it also leads us to look at what our facilities are and where our schools are and where we need to work on that as well. Does any other comments before we move on? No public comment? All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you all for that. So now we'll move on to B, which is personnel negotiations and policies. And up is to approve a revision of, a policy for, policy revision for first reading. Over to you Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. Yes, we're asking trustees to, uh, approve a policy revision. This is policy 5250, which deals with personnel. Since we've moved to board docs, we now have the ability to search by keywords and do some other things. So we can go in and search for policies that need to be reviewed annually. Or we can find terminology that exists in our policies from 1997. For example, executive regional directors. We don't have executive regional directors, but we do have assistant superintendents. So, um, we're just, this is just a, a, a change in language from executive regional directors to assistant superintendents and includes the executive director of human resources rather than director of personnel.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair of Gares. Seconded by trustee Wallach. Any final trustee comments?
I have a question, I guess. So since we have this new, um, platform, will we be seeing more revisions or anything coming up?
Uh, potentially, yeah. Um, we're just, we're just working through each of the policy series and, and seeing what there is to, to change. Probably the biggest place where we'll see change is when, uh, new legislation goes into effect after this next legislative cycle.
All right. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So now we'll move on to item C, which is information only, and it's for teaching and learning. And I'll pass it back over to Superintendent Hill and Assistant Superintendent Shattuck and Assistant Superintendent Giamo. Sorry, Giamo.
Burke Moss. I've heard it all, so. I like it, I like it.
Well, um, I'm gonna start just by saying thank you, Pat, for priming the pump tonight on that contract language. Uh, because, uh, we have a hundred slides of data to share with the board. And nobody is gonna sleep tonight because they're so excited about what we're about to present. So, um, yes, Amy and Vinny and I have been, uh, putting together, um, data to share with the board. And, um, I know that Arlene, uh, loves data. But this is, what we're sharing tonight is raw data. This is numbers and percents, and it doesn't reflect any analysis, um, so to speak. There's no margin of error or standard deviation or, uh, confidence intervals or central tendencies or any of those things that Arlene, I think, would love to see. We're simple people, I am an English guy, and so.
I actually do have a few comments about that.
I, I bet you do, but we'll save that for another time. We have a hundred slides to get through tonight, so if we did one minute on each slide, we have a hundred minutes. So some of these we're gonna move through rather quickly. Uh, but we wanted to share, um, just our enrollment, uh, demographic data, some assessment data. Um, and we're taking a, a really, in some cases, a really high level. And, and we could, we could spend days going through low, low-level data in terms of gap analysis based off of, um, certain ethnic groups or race or, uh, age levels or grade level. Like, we could, we could disaggregate this in a hundred different ways. And that's, uh, to a certain extent, what we do, but we're, we're gonna keep this a little bit high level today. Um, what I would also say is that this data that you'll see, you might see that there's a difference between one number that's represented on one slide and a different number on another slide. And part of the reason for that is when we gather data, we're usually pulling it out of like a, a student database system like Infinite Campus. Well, we just started using Infinite Campus a couple of years ago. And so we're using an old database system that maybe wasn't as robust in being able to pull data. And then we're also pulling from external sources like the Office of Public Instruction, who maybe gathers data, uh, at a different time. So we have different snapshots. So you may see some variance, we'll talk a little bit about those as we go through. Um, I, I think the other thing to say just upfront is that, um, you know, in full transparency, some of this isn't flattering, uh, data for us. Um, these are areas that I think we have a, an opportunity to look at and improve and be even better at what we do. And so, um, this is kind of, uh, we're, we're taking off the lipstick, um, so to speak. But I just wanna share that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, open up the, um, document here. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna click through the slides, but we're gonna start with Amy and Vinny, and they're just gonna share some information. And I may have to kind of scroll some of these up just because of the text box. I don't know if there's a, Brian, is there a way to move that text box?
No.
No, the one down in the middle. Yeah, that one.
It's still on, it's just hidden, right?
Yeah, you're adding to the minutes. All right. Move on. Okay, so, um, like Micah said, we've organized this in a way where, uh, we'll start with more of a broad view, a, um, a bird's eye view, looking down on the data. And then we'll dig a little bit deeper into that as we get through the hundred slides. Um, so we're starting with EL, early literacy through 12. And this is the enrollment numbers. Um, we have a five-year, um, outlook here. And, um, as you can see, we have dropped, of course, in, in 2023 and 2024. The, um, date that is covered up is during COVID and the pandemic, when we were pretty low in our enrollment. Um, again, this is a district view. This is all of our schools, um, EL through 12th grade. This is a slide of our free and reduced. And as you can see, um, we continue to creep upwards. We're at 37% last year. Um, we'll have some more data that is, um, relevant to this year, a little bit later in the presentation. But, um, you'll notice that in 2020, 2021, that was when our entire district received free breakfast and free lunch. Uh, we did not fill out the paperwork that we needed, um, uh, in previous years. So that's where you'll see that discrepancy. IEPs, this is, uh, what Micah was talking about a little bit earlier, where we have a number of different data points that shows that, um, in 2023, 2024, our percentage was closer to 17% of kids who have an individual education, um, plan. And, um, but, but again, when we're pulling from our student information system, sometimes those differ, depending on when we did and, and so forth. So, um, as you can see, we're gradually, um, growing as well. 504s, um, same thing. Um, and where, last year, we ended at about a 9% of our kids with a 504.
What's a 504?
Um, a 504 is a plan that, um, supports kids who have physical or mental, um, impairments. And sometimes they're temporary, but it provides accommodations for kids within the classroom. Um, and there are yearly, uh, meetings on it, and they have accommodations throughout the day. Um, these are our homeless numbers. I know that, um, a more respectful term now is called houseless. And, uh, we continue to grow with our students. Um, we're at about, last year ended at about 5% of our kids, um, who were homeless. Uh, these are our gifted numbers. Now, this, this is a chart that, um, is a little skewed because of the different types of assessments that we've done with our kids before the pandemic. That's behind the, the wording. Uh, we used to do a COGAT for all second graders, and that was a screener. And, um, that increased our numbers quite a bit. Then we, uh, started STAR, which was a yearly assessment that we took in the fall, the, the winter and spring. And we used those numbers to help identify students who, um, were gifted. And then, um, from about the pandemic on, we've only used referrals. And so, um, we don't use STAR anymore. And, um, we're looking at how we're going to identify that as well. Uh, these are our ELL numbers. Uh, as you can see, uh, we're at 3%. One of the, I, I talked to Shirley Lindberg, um, today, and, and probably three years ago, we were, we were seeing about 30 families, um, uh, come to Missoula, with about a third of those families having school-aged children. Um, but now we're seeing more like 50 families coming in, and about half of them are, um, school-aged children. So we're seeing between 20 and 25 new students, new ELL students, um, per year. This is average daily attendance. Uh, I know that lots of teachers and schools, um, want to improve their, their attendance, and it actually has been, um, improving. Uh, last year, we were sitting at a 91%. And then chronically absent, um, this is kids who are missing, and Arlene, I think I told you 10 days, 10% of their days throughout the year. Yeah.
And that would be for any reason.
That would be for any reason. It could be excused, unexcused, but, um, 10%.
All right. I can, uh, feel the excitement building. So, um, I get to, uh, get the baton after that. As Amy said, you know, we, we go from a, a wide lens and we'll narrow down further. So we'll get into grade bands, we'll talk, uh, EL5 and then, uh, middle school and then high school data for you all. Uh, one of the things I do wanna touch on before we get into enrollment, um, when you look at the absenteeism, I think it's a good example. One of the areas that we're trying to go as a district is early intervention. So we've talked a lot the last couple of years with the board about early, early literacy programs, expanding those from three a few years ago to five, uh, to now we have nine. But it's the same concept around social and emotional wellness of kids and attendance. So two other things that we're really focused on right now, we, we mentioned to the board a year ago, the crisis mobile unit that we now have at every grade level, um, that's able to respond and, and help students that may be in crisis. But also now we're working with a lot of our community members around a, um, attendance group. And so that, that partnership is with us, with youth court, with our city, county, um, and then other, um, uh, agencies around the city to try to address attendance and how we support them. So it's in its infancy. Uh, we just had our second meeting this year around how do we get students engaged? How do we keep them at school? And really, more importantly, how do we connect with families that aren't getting kids to school? We know there's a lot of different reasons for that. And, um, trying to work with youth court providence with our, with our city, county to get students to school and use our tiered systems to try to address that chronic absenteeism, uh, for our students.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, are we using the OPI early warning system to also identify kids that are, um, struggling?
Yep, that'll be a part of, um, the process. I mean, there's, as we've talked about, there's the academic side and then that braided tiered system. Um, that'll go in the attendance group and what they're talking about. So I think there'll be various components to that, but that is one factor that they'll look at as well. Yep, great question. Okay, uh, back to the exciting slides. So, um, you can look here, uh, at the EL5 enrollment. You'll notice, again, that five-year outlook. I think it's interesting, as you look at the data, um, you see there in 23, 24, we went down, um, again, roughly in five years, we're down 350 students. We talked a lot about that in our board meetings and the decisions and, and tough decisions that we had to make last year with the budget. Um, one of the things that we will see this year is an increase at this point. Um, part of that is, again, I'll go back to the early literacy classrooms. So two years ago, we had two classrooms. Last year, we had five. Now we're up to nine. And so, uh, we're actually looking to grow students this year, um, in this moment, which is exciting for us. One other, one other little tidbit for the group, uh, we have homeschool numbers. So right now, we have 57 students in high school that are being homeschooled. And then we have 126 K8 that are currently, uh, who live in our area that are homeschooled. Um, again, free and reduced, uh, I would just highlight again, the, the growth that we're continuing to see, uh, the need, um, for families and, and trying to continue to be involved with our community and, and doing what we can to address those concerns that we see growing in our community. Uh, EL5, again, um, Amy gave, gave the great definition of what a 504 is. That has continued to stay steady and is, is pretty close to the national average. IEPs, um, again, 14% there for EL5. The national average hovers around 16, 17%. Um, you can see, uh, the five-year outlook there as well. And ELL, uh, I don't really have anything to add outside of the, the definition that Amy gave and kind of the perspective from the district side. It's continued to be at 3% and holding firm there.
I'm just gonna add something real quick. One thing to keep in mind, we've had declining enrollments. 3% of 6,000 is different than 3% of 4,000. So we actually are seeing an increase in the numbers of students that we're serving, even though the percentage has remained relatively flat.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, great point. That, that livened it up, so I appreciate that. So, uh, yeah, as we look at, as we look at the gifted slides, so one thing to, to look there, um, back in 1920, previous to that, we had a standard, uh, assessment, which would have been called the COGAT. Um, we, we used to test that for every second grader. Um, and then we evolved to using our own district data, which is STAR. Um, so any students that tested at the 95 percentile for math or ELA, they would have been referred and, and tested for gifted. You can see that number holding strong. We're gonna actually go back to testing the COGAT to all second graders. Um, and again, the national average is, is pretty close to that. Uh, it varies, um, geographically 5% to 7%, so we're well within that range. Um, again, this data, I think it just continues. Again, this data, I think it just continues to reinforce, you know, the impact that we had that it has on families and in trying to do what we can to support our students when they're coming to us with many different challenges and making sure that our systems are tight, that we're identifying any students that have any needs, and we're continuing to do what we can to help all families. Average daily attendance, pretty, again, falls within the national averages and norms. It's nice to see that it is decreasing in terms of engagement and trying to get students to school. That that chronic absenteeism is a number that we look a lot at. And again, I think that'll evolve out of that attendance group and trying to to build some community partnerships that we know will be important to address that as well. Yes?
When we talk about 10% of missing days, I know a ton of sports families that are gonna freak out that it's them. How many days total?
So it's roughly, you'd look at 10%, 18%. The Department of Ed would say chronic would be 15 days. So anywhere between 15 and 18 would be the concern. I think I think there's a lot of different pieces within that, right? A family that is expecting and planning, and you're helping to build that expectation out of school is probably going to lead to more success. It's those kiddos that we're not making contact with. There's barriers, there's obstacles to get them to school. We're not being able to connect with guardians. Those are the ones that we're seeing that are falling behind. And again, I'll go back to that attendance working group that we're trying to think innovative about how do we connect to those families that may have their own barriers or obstacles to us as a district. They may have their own reservations of connecting with us, whether it be, you know, a BIPOC family or a family that had a terrible experience in public school. And so what are we doing to engage them and get their kiddos to school is is important.
Yeah, and I would also add that activities, if they're school sanctioned, do not count against your attendance. You're actually counted as present in our in the way that in the way that the system is set up.
All right, and we'll jump to middle school. I'll go a little quicker here because it's it's kind of redundant on the district lens and then K5. You'll consider it's the typical trend that we're seeing in enrollment. Again, free and reduced, growing. 504s continue to grow. I think it's interesting, right? When you look at your our IEPs and 504s, the number that you look at, if it's our number that we're pulling out of Infinite Campus, if you're looking at the data out of GEMS from OPI, between 504s and IEPs, you know, it's almost a quarter of our students that have needs. And what are we doing to address those in our buildings? ELL, near the same percentage. Gifted's gonna look similar to our to our EL5 group. Our houseless population continuing to be similar. And then we go to our average daily attendance in our chronic group. And we still have a lot of work to do there. Take it away, Amy.
All right, high school. So we have seen some some growth in the high school. I know that there was, when I was a principal at one of our elementaries, we saw the bubble come through. And right now, that's really showing in sophomore and juniors at the high school level right now. So we have seen some growth with with enrollment at the high school level.
Amy, can I interject here?
You bet.
So out of curiosity today, I asked Pat for the demographers report, what the predictions were for enrollments versus what we have actually enrolled. And so I put together a little chart. And this is the predicted 2324. So they had all our historical data up to 2223. And these were the predicted numbers for enrollment at each of these school sites. And the actual, this is the actual number of students that are enrolled at Chief Charlo today. And I put in the minus 18. That represents the early literacy students. So if we were to do the the difference is 444 minus 18 minus the 414. And that leaves, so we were were down 48 students from what was predicted. What is kind of, and so you can see where Lowell was higher. Even if I subtract out the 18 early literacy students, we were still 45 students more at Lowell than what was predicted. And Paxson is down almost 100 from what was predicted. But if I go down here, these were the predicted totals. It was 3564 in 2324, 3566 in 2425. And we actually, with the early literacy in there, landed at almost exactly. We were within two students of what was predicted. They weren't accounting for 154 early literacy students. So if we did not have those that program, if we were at like other districts where we couldn't afford to do that, we would be down another 150-plus students this year over last year. So what I put in just a percentage here, the minus 4.37% is the difference between what was predicted and what was actual, less the early literacy students. For the middle schools, we ended up plus 12 over what was predicted. So they actually predicted fewer, and we ended up with more. And then at the high school level, and I put in Connect and Teach Academy in there as well, just so that you see that those numbers are encapsulated. So like this might not be a great representation. The Big Sky predicted numbers, 1267. We have students who attend from Big Sky at Willard. If you're just doing even, say, split, we have about 150 kids at Willard. That's about 50 kids per high school are attending Willard. So when you look at it, the the prediction, they were within 115. So overall, from the district, between what was predicted and what we actually have for total enrollment right now, we're within 105 students. So it wasn't it wasn't bad. It just it missed the mark in a couple of areas where they were trying to make some predictions before things came into play. And I think this will lead into a bigger discussion about boundaries and where we're zoning and doing all of those kind of things because we can see where we have big growth in some pockets. We have, you know, declining enrollment in others. The hard part is, well, how do you predict which ones are gonna grow and which ones are gonna decline? We see that the Bellagio added a certain element to population growth in the Lowell neighborhood. But I really can't explain the drop of students at Paxson. I just, I don't know. What's that? Could be housing prices, yes. It could be a variety of things. But I just wanted to share that from an enrollment perspective, where we were at relative to the demographer. So I thought actually being within 1% was, that's a pretty good prediction. And now that I've livened it up again, Amy, it's back to you.
That was exciting.
I know.
I know. 101. So there's the enrollment. If you move on to the free and reduced, like the trend across the district, we are increasing in our percentage. One of the we'll see later in a slide, Big Sky and Sealy generally have been our title schools that have had the higher percentage. But Helgate is really creeping up there too. And so that's a thing that we'll have to address as a district. 504, slight increase, like the trends across the district. IEP, this is 11%. And I believe in our other slides, it's closer to 14% at the high school level. ELL is at a 2%. And gifted, same same kind of trends you'll see throughout all of our buildings with our populations. Holding steady at 3% at the high school for our homeless or houseless population. And our average daily attendance is 89%, which is lower than our middle school and elementary. But that's like, Vinnie said, we'll be addressing that with the committee. That's going to be an EL12 committee.
Amy, I really like how you put in 285%, 286%.
I know. I don't know why you did that. It's really broken down by half, half a percentage point.
We actually think it was half percentage points, and then it rounded it. So it came to an 80.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for pointing that out, Micah.
You're welcome.
Yeah, all right. Great. Yeah, yeah. And and there's a lot of factors to that, especially at the high school level, having 40% chronically absent. But yeah, it's it's definitely things that we've heard from teachers and from administration on. We have got to address that.
All right, thanks, Amy. Here for the next 20 slides or so, Amy and I will go back and forth a little bit, and then you'll get to the real meat and potatoes of the presentation with Micah. The last 35 slides or or more, where you'll have some questions and some dialogue back and forth. I think as you look at the the next, you know, several slides, you really, I think it emphasizes MCPS continuing to be more diverse. That comes with great opportunity, also challenges. You've seen that with some of the FTE that we have made a decision on within our general fund that Michael will talk about a little later. But I think it gives you a good snapshot as you go deeper into the data and now seeing grade band, school versus school, title versus non-title. So this is our ethnicity report. You can see these are all gonna match pretty close with the district data, but it gives you a good lens of our students. 68 again, pretty similar.
Sorry, I have to kind of scroll a lot.
No, you're good. And
I can make it a little smaller.
No. To save you all some time in Amy's voice, I can do the high school here, but they're gonna look similar as well. And then if you go into, you'll go to K5, well, EL5, sorry. You'll go to non-title and title. It's interesting to look at the data here and have a chance to look at our five non-title schools and compare. And then again, you'll have a chance to look at our title schools, EL5. Middle school, our one title school in middle school is Porter. And you'll also see the data for Meadow Hill and Washington. High school, Amy, anything that you want to add on that? Okay. And we gave you a view here of our special education. You'll see, again, those numbers doesn't show up well there, but it does in your packet. Again, the discrepancy between Infinite Campus and some of the other data or the snapshot of time when we took it is about 17%. You can see special education district, K5, 58, and 912. You'll go further in for EL5 for non-title schools. You'll have, you can take a look at the graph at the bottom. 504s, IEPs, again, we mentioned this a little bit ago, but you're talking, you know, a fifth to a fourth of your students with additional needs that we're trying to make sure that we address in our buildings and as a district. We have our title school percentages, middle school and high school. And again, those all are gonna hover around the national norms and then what we saw from a snapshot from five years ago. Free and reduced, this number's off. It should actually be 61%. You'll see that here in a little bit when it lines up. Our numbers of free and reduced, MCPS, K5, middle school and high school. It was interesting, I don't know if Micah plans to share, but we we spent the morning at the food bank. And it was interesting even hearing their perspective and what they're seeing. In the past years, they would have, we have what's called Empower Packs, which are food bags that we'll send home on the weekends for students. Historically, that number's been between 1,000 and 1,100. And right now, they're sending home 1,300 a week. And so I think that gives you a sense, too, of the increased need and the challenges that our families are facing. Sorry if I took your thunder away on that one.
No, yeah, that's good.
You mentioned it earlier, and I liked it. Okay, we got EL, continuing to just look at our numbers. Middle school and high school, reduced, free. And then there again is our English Language Learner numbers. And Michael will talk a little bit more about some of the decisions we made in the general fund to help support this specific gap as well. Title and non-title ELL numbers. Our middle school again, and our high school. And so without further ado, I think I used that right, that term, for the first time, Superintendent Hill.
Yeah, and if at any time, any questions, raise your hand or just talk over the top of us. We're glad to answer them. So
What's the what's the population ELL in other school districts? That's the one slide I didn't see percentage of ELL in other districts.
That's a great question. So you're, are you thinking maybe our area or even in the state?
Compared to the state? I'd love to know.
That's a great question. I can get that for us. I can get it to the board this week.
So this slide and the ones that follow, all of this data is taken off of a website called GEMS, which stands for, gotta look it up again, the Growth and Enhancement of Montana Students. And this is a very public-facing site. Anybody can go, if you Google Montana OPI GEMS, it's gonna take you to a website. And you can search by state. You can search by district, and you can search by school for data. And then for people like myself, superintendents or assistant superintendents or principals, we actually have a login that we can dive even deeper into the data without being representative of like averages. And so just want to talk a little bit about this. And so sometimes you look at this and you say, well, what's, like, the enrollment count, is that right? I thought I thought our enrollment was higher or it was lower. This is looking at the elementary district, so it's K8. So it's a combination of those two things. And then sometimes we confuse it with an enrollment count with our A and B count. And our A and B count is is a different number. It's actually usually a larger number because it's taking the average of a count in October, a count in February, and then you divide that by two. You multiply it times 187 days because we pay teachers for 187 days in their contract. And you divide by the number of pupil days, which is 180. Amy, we're gonna test on this later, so. So sometimes those numbers can be confusing. But this is, when you pull up Missoula Elementary District, this is the snapshot. This is the slide or the image that comes up. And you can see, and I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna give some definition to some of these things. Attendance rate, so 91.3% attendance rate. That means that on any given day, 91.3% of our students are coming to school. That is not the same thing as a a chronically absent rate or other other rate. There's no cohort graduation rate because these are elementary students. They don't graduate. Our student-to-teacher ratio, so that is 13 to 1. And you'll see a slide where we're actually, we have the lowest student-to-teacher ratio. It's misleading, though. And and here's why I would say that. This includes librarians, music teachers, specialists, anybody who has a certificate and is recognized in Montana as being highly qualified. And we also take great care in expending dollars out of, say, Title II or Title I on staffing and not necessarily on things. And so you can see that that could create some sort of discrepancy. So as you look at these things, sometimes you have to take it with a grain of salt. I can tell you, I took the total number of elementary students, EL through 5, divided it by the number of teachers we have in the classroom, not specialists or other people. And our average classroom size is 22.99. So our ratio is 1 to 22.99 for this year for teachers. So I just wanted to to kind of throw that in. Our English Language Learner percentage, they put us at 3.1%. So one thing that we can do, and you'll see where I did some comparison with achievement data, is you can go in and you can pull up each, you can, you can actually do comparisons between districts. And that's one thing, there's a little bit of a caveat to all of this, is that we love to compare ourselves to how someone else is doing. And what it doesn't do is it doesn't tell the whole story of what is the population that we're working with? What does it look like at an individual school? What does it look like at an individual grade level? There's just so many different things that we look at. And so all of this comes with a warning, right? So I'm anticipating that the news is gonna pick up on this, and they're gonna want to have a conversation around this. And they're gonna, you know, they're gonna pull up a slide, and they're gonna say, look at how Missoula is doing compared to X or Y. And I think that can be somewhat misleading. Our special education participation, that's that 17.9%. So we're hovering right around 18% of our students are in special ed. Where, but you don't see the 504 number in there. And so we have another percentage of students hovering right around 10% that are receiving 504. So literally, one in every four students that walks through our school doors is receiving additional services, support, modifications, accommodations to help them with their learning. That is a that is a huge number. If you think about being a classroom teacher, and I have 30 freshman kids walking to my English class, and 25% of them are going to need some sort of a modification, and it's not all the same for everyone. You can imagine what that looks like and the and the stress that that puts on a system when you have those kind of numbers. like and the, and the stress that that puts on a system when you have those kind of numbers. Our economically disadvantaged percentage, forty-four percent of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch in our elementary district. That's a big number when you're pushing almost fifty percent. Community eligibility provision, so that's CEP. We have two schools that are qualified for CEP, meaning that they've met a threshold that allows them to receive free breakfast and lunch for everybody in the school because the percentage was so high. We looked at all of our schools and how many could qualify. For most of them, it would be a losing venture to say everybody qualifies. We have the numbers in terms of percentages that qualify. We do not have the participation to make it viable, meaning twenty-five percent of the kids maybe qualify for free and reduced, but only twelve percent are actually using that service or taking advantage of it. So it creates a little bit of a discrepancy there. And we participate in national school lunch programs, and we have twelve schools, nine elementary and three middle schools. So here's enrollment by district, and I took my graphs a step further by putting some color that would draw your attention to where Missoula is.
Oh, stop.
Took a long time, let me tell you. And you could see in our elementary district, we are tied with Helena for the number of students. This is all based off of twenty-two, twenty-three numbers, but you can see where the population sits. Our student-to-teacher ratio by district, again, you can see where we have, ours is thirteen, according to OPI, and that can be misleading too, right? The legislature says, oh, well, the average cloud, you know, you're thirteen to one, that's your ratio. And it's like, but in the classroom, that's not the ratio. And so again, it's an interesting data point.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
So you were saying that it includes all licensed people, like librarians. So if the school is currently using emergency teachers, those people wouldn't count, right?
Do not count. Attendance rate, and you can see across all the AA districts, you know, we're, everyone's hovering right in around between ninety and ninety-two percent. If you were to say, what's the goal? The goal is ninety-five percent. You want to see having an average daily attendance rate of around ninety-five percent. It's getting over that hurdle, that group that's chronically absent. And it's a hard one too, because a kid who has perfect attendance, being averaged with a kid who shows up fifty percent of the time does not mean that you have an average daily attendance of seventy-five percent. You have one kid who's hardly ever there and one who's there all the time. So that becomes another, you know, just how you want to analyze this and make reference to these numbers. There's our special education rate by district. Per pupil expenditure amount by district, this is another interesting number. Right now, Missoula spends thirteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars per pupil as an average for the district. And I know that Lowell is sitting right around seventeen thousand per student, and then we have another school that might be at around twelve thousand per student. So what gets factored into that? Well, it's quite a list of things that get factored into that, including, where did I write that down? All of our general fund, federal funds, Title I, Title II, Title IV, Title VI. Our inter-local agreement, so if we spent a million dollars out of our inter-local agreement, that counts against our per pupil expenditures. Our transportation fund, which we know is quite high. Food service, building reserve, technology fund, now we'll be adding our safety levy to it. So when you look at these per pupil expenditures, you're factoring in a lot of different funds that aren't necessarily representing that that's what we're, I don't even know how to say it. Like, it can be really misrepresenting because you can go in and you can look at every school, by school or every district in the state in GEMS, and you'll see that maybe a small community or a small school like De Smet, they're spending thirty-six thousand dollars per student. But they also passed a bond project, or that they've passed a safety, something else happens and impacts what that number is. So again, when the state says, oh, we're spending this, well, yeah, we spent seven hundred thousand dollars on boilers, roofs and sidewalk repair. That wasn't like it was going into the pupil per se, but that's what they're, it's being represented as.
Can you remind me how much we get per A and B for an elementary student from the state? So if we're spending thirteen thousand, how much is the state actually giving us?
Fifty.
A and B's about six.
Yeah, it's less than six. So again, this is just taken directly off of the GEMS website. So statewide assessments, if you plug in Missoula Elementary District, and you can see there's like a little drop-down menu, you can pick any district you want, you can go search it. And they give you a graph, a bar graph, that shows what percentage of students scored at a particular level, novice, nearing proficient, proficient or advanced, on these three assessments, math, English and science, which is great. By the way, these assessments are all out the window this year, and we're now doing the MAST through-year assessments. So we will not be able to compare on a statewide assessment how we did last year to this year. It'll be all new for us. What you do want to see in this is that the red and orange or red and yellow numbers are, or lines on the graph are smaller, and your green and blue are larger. So again, we like to compare ourselves to the state, or we compare ourselves to other AA districts. And you can see, yeah, as a district, only twenty-four and a half percent of our students were scored novice compared to the state's thirty-two point six four percent. And so, and I'm not going to go through all of those, but I think it just gives you a sense of what we're, what we're looking at. And then, you know, really the question is, is how do you, how do you evaluate that? Like, what's the difference between being novice and being nearing proficient? And you're going to see the average scores here in just a minute, which can really kind of skew some of this data. I think one of the, and so I, I put up the math, English and science, and I won't spend a lot of time on there. But then I broke it out by district, like what percent of our students are scoring below the benchmark? Belgrade doesn't even, doesn't even register an OPI's data. They had no, no data. And then you're going to see some really interesting things, like Great Falls says eighty-seven percent scored below the benchmark in their district data. And I went further and I just looked at their more detailed view, and they had zero percent of their students score in advanced. And so I emailed the superintendent in Great Falls, I said, hey, do you know that this is like out there? She was like, what's going on? Well, it turns out, half the districts in Montana, AA districts in Montana were doing the MAST.
Pilot.
Pilot program, and the other four districts were doing the S-Back. So these scores trying to compare us to anybody else, absolutely, like it makes no sense at this point. So you see like Butte, they, seventy-two percent of their students scored above the benchmark, but we're not even sure how many kids actually took the test in Butte. And when you get to the scores, you can see Butte's score was eleven hundred and ninety-eight. So they had some students take it, but it was very few. And where our score was twenty-four seventy-one, but over half of our kids scored below the benchmark, and seventy-two percent of Butte's students scored above. Like, you can't even make sense of it, but we wanted to share the data. Same thing with ELA, you're, you know, it's going to be really hard to gauge where we're at in relation to it. I think, you know, from a state perspective, a lot of times we benchmark ourselves off of what's happening in Bozeman. They've traditionally, across different measures, different assessments, had higher scores than, than most in the state. So that's usually where we're, where we're looking. So it'll be interesting to see how the MAST system and what those scores represent look for us, because this is really a summative, like end of the year, you spend hours and hours doing these assessments. And the MAST assessment is, you're doing it periodically throughout the year, so you teach content and then you test, see where the kids are at. Did they learn it or know it? And then you come back to it and you say, oh, well, my kids learned it, we're moving on, or my students didn't, we need to spend more time in this area. So it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just, it's time-consuming, it's five times in the year that we're having to do that. Then you see science, kind of same thing, although I thought it was really interesting, the average score by district in science was not statistically significant, was it? Did you run the Tukey-Cramer procedure on that? Like, get that analysis of the variance? Yeah. So then high school, so here you see our enrollment five thousand, or four thousand, our attendance rate eighty-eight percent. Again, that's eighty-eight percent of our students. The cohort graduation rate, so you see it's eighty-five point two percent, and our dropout rate is actually around four percent, just a little bit, bit below four percent. So those two numbers don't add up. What's the difference? This, what this number is telling you is that when students entered MCPS in ninth grade, the first day that they were in, if they were in our system and they did not walk across the stage for whatever reason, they, not necessarily dropped out, they transferred to another school in the state, out of state, out of country, went to homeschool, whatever it is, this is the number of students that stayed with us. So we lost approximately fifteen percent of our students out of that original cohort of students. Makes sense? Student-to-teacher ratio, fourteen to one, again, kind of that same story. English learner percentage is two point three percent, special education participation fourteen point three, but we have a higher 504 percentage going into the high school. Thirty-six percent economically disadvantaged. We have no schools that are community eligibility provision qualified, but we do participate in our school lunch program. So by district, Missoula High School District is the second largest district in the state. Student-to-teacher ratio, we're on the low end of that relative to some of the other districts, but we also have, again, we spend significant portions of our budgets that have discretion on reducing class size, supporting Title I, those kind of things. Attendance rate, you can see anywhere from eighty-four to ninety-one point six percent. So that's an area that, you know, again, if, if we're, if there's a goal, it'd be ninety-five percent of our students are coming to school every day. Graduation rate by district, and that's that cohort rate, so it's not, that's not a dropout. Special education rate by district, we're right in there with the top with Butte Billings and Helena. Per pupil expenditure, so we're a little less on the high school side than the elementary side, but you can see where Bozeman's sitting at about eighteen thousand, six hundred. So they have maxed out every levy, they have a safety levy for their high school district, they have building reserves, they have a, you know, transportation, all those things factor into that per pupil expenditure. And on the high school side, the A and B amount is about, what is it, Pat, seven, seven thousand?
High sevens.
Yeah, I think it's seven, seventy-eight hundred, something like that. So ACT scores, so we got math, English and science. Again, the lower the, or the smaller the red and yellow are on the graph, the better you're doing. The higher, the larger the green and blue, you could say, the better that you're doing. So as we look at those, you know, like our ELA, you know, we've got relatively low percentages in the novice and nearing proficiency, so that's an area where we've always done relatively well on a national norm reference test, keeping in mind that when you look at ACTs and SATs, you're literally rank ordering the students from top to bottom. So if I got, I could have gotten eighty-five percent of the questions right, but if seventy-five percent of my peers also got eighty-five percent of the questions right, I'm like, I'm down here.
Does every student in Montana currently take the ACT?
All juniors.
Right, because that makes a big difference too.
It does, yeah. So in some states, they, it's not required. This, so we were going to do the S-Back for the high school side of this, and then the state just scrapped it, said, nah, we're just going to do the ACT, call it good enough. Interestingly, lots of college and university systems are no longer requiring ACT or SAT scores. You might also hear an argument from teachers or principals saying, we don't teach to the ACT, right? We start with a student who's, you know, I'll just use math in as example, is, is pre-algebra in their freshman year, and if we can get them to algebra two by their senior year, that's awesome, that's good stuff. But they aren't, they haven't even taken algebra two by the time they've taken this test. So what are we really testing? And we'd rather look at growth as opposed to where are we at in relation to someone else. But this is it. So ACT, about sixty-four percent of our students below the benchmark. You can see Bozeman hit about fifty percent, so they're about half and half. So conversely, above the benchmark, thirty-six percent. Interestingly, we have the highest average score on the ACT at twenty-two. So we beat Bozeman. Not that we're comparing, like, nobody looking, like, there was a reason why I put the blue in there, yeah.
That and math.
Mm-hmm. ELA, thirty-three percent of our students below the benchmark, sixty-seven percent above. So if you think, you know, so you start to poll in, okay, what does that look like for when we start to do some gap analysis on this? Who are the students then that are not making it to benchmark? Students with disabilities, students with 504s. We generally see lower scores with lower socioeconomics. We see lower scores generally with students of minority. So those are the areas that we really want to have some focus and try and beef up our, our efforts. And Vinnie mentioned this earlier, but, you know, when we did the gap analysis last year, one of the areas, even through all the cuts, one of the things that we said was, we're still going to add to our Native American Student Services population. We have some significant gaps there when we look at graduation rates based on that population. We also have an ELL population. So we added staffing and we increased our contributions from the general fund to put more support into those areas to, for those students. And so that's the types, those are the types of things that we like to do with this data is to say, okay, what, where are we falling short? How do we move the needle even for a kid to go from nearing proficient to proficient on the S-Back? Science, really similar picture. We did, we tied Bozeman on the ACT science. The reason why we're not in the far right is they had a higher percentage of students who were proficient versus our district. And that was a hundred slides. Questions?
Any questions?
Rob, it looks like you've got something on your mind.
I've seen any questions.
I was actually going to comment that you switched the colors on which bar was Missoula halfway through, and I was really confused. It was just all out the window after that, so.
One was, it was so I could keep track of which one was elementary and which one was high school. Yeah.
Yeah, and I had a, again, it's the same kind of thing. I don't know what you do, but when you have some graphs go from zero to twenty and others, you know, zero to ninety and others, it gets confusing, but I don't know what, what rule to use, but.
It's, it's a little bit of statistical manipulation. Yes. I know, I, you'll, you'll see that I didn't do that to the extent that Amy did.
Any other, just Vice Chair of GERS?
I'm curious how, I mean, we all have day-to-day jobs, we're all working stuff. How close data-wise do we keep track up to date instead of on an annual basis? Do we have, I mean, like you mentioned, this says thirteen to one student-to-teacher ratio, but we're really at like twenty-three in K-5 right now. So what, how much data do we have on that that's more recent, like this year? So we have the, because I think the school board needs to, and the public need to know the effects of our budget changes and our staffing changes in the school district.
Yeah, I think that's where, you know, as we talk about, how do we disaggregate this data? That would be one, one place that we could do that. So let's go back to what our enrollments were on this date in 2023 and calculate out what our classroom average size was using the actual teacher in the classroom and the number of students registered with that teacher in, say, second grade. And then let's look at, what does it look like for currently this year? We cut a number of positions district-wide, and so we know that average has gone up. And when you get into those conversations, you start to get into conversations around, well, and you might hear this from staff, right? Like, my class sizes are so big, like I can't do my job. But there is actually no statistical correlation to saying smaller class sizes equals more, better student achievement, right? So if you have a district or a school where you have a teacher who is not performing well, it doesn't matter if they have ten kids or thirty kids, they're not performing well. So it's like, you have to be able to take some of that into account. Would I say that teaching a class of twenty is easier on the soul than thirty? Absolutely. Right? Like the behaviors and the other things that come along, not just with educating kids, but all the other responsibilities that we have for behavior, mental health, physical health, like, I mean, it just, you can feel how this can be compounding when you look at it through that lens of the teacher who's like, let's look at this, let's look at this demographic and just say that the average classroom in Missoula... average classroom in Missoula is eighty-three percent Caucasian, and that means the rest are minority, that one in every four, one in every five has an IEP or a 504. And we haven't even gotten into the mental health or the behavioral data that we have. So these are like, like, we're going to continue to dig and dig deep, it's just a matter of getting the right data polls. So a lot of this is like manual counting and, and things like that, so. But it is important, and we want to be able to provide that. So our goal, and if this would be the will of the boards, I think some things that we could do is really try and spotlight some of the good things that are going on in our buildings, and where we can have building principals actually come and do a ten-minute presentation on their data within their building, what they're seeing, how, what that looks like for a Franklin or a Lowell or a Jeanette Rankin or, or whatever that may be. So something I just want to talk to board leadership about, and then would encourage our building principals to be able to come in and share that kind of information too.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comments? CNN, the time is seven fifty-two and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.